Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
Okay. Prove the agenda, then?
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, invocation is from Bethlehem United Methodist Church. Good evening.
Good evening. To work into the prayer, I heard about a doctor. I don't know if there's any doctors here tonight, but the guy's diagnosis, and the guy went home, and the wife says, "Well, what happened?" And he said, "He was pretty down." He said, "Well, the doctor's asked to take his medication and the rest of my life." "Well, what are you so down about that? Didn't sound so bad?" He said, "Well, they only gave me four pills." So, no matter how long we're here in this life, we do need to do our very best, and that's what we wish for you all tonight. Let's pray. Give us steadfast hearts, Lord, which no unworthy thought can drag down, unconquered hearts which no troubles can wear out, upright hearts which no unworthy purpose may toss aside. Be so upon us, O Lord, understanding to know you, the diligence to seek you with wisdom, to do the best we possibly can for this city and the surrounding area. We remember the people that have placed us here, and we give thanks for the honor to serve them in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, so pleasure of our leadings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All righty, we do have a proclamation. Hutchinson and Random Acts of Kindness Day. Whereas the Random Acts of Kindness Group, as a part of Hutchinson Leadership Institute, has set out to spread goodwill throughout the city of Hutchinson. Whereas it has been noted that Random Acts of Kindness promotes a healthy life by improving overall for both giver and receiver. Whereas Random Acts of Kindness Group believes that people of all ages, young to old, can help to make a better world by doing something nice for someone else. Whereas the goal for this proclamation date is to encourage a pay it forward, expert response for each random acts of kindness received. The hope is that the recipient will turn to several random acts and so on. Whereas we will be distributing May Day baskets to select residents of Hutchinson on this day to let them know we care. Whereas we are incorporating several civic groups within Hutchinson to join us in the preparation and distribution of these baskets in hope that they will turn, pay it forward. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Eri T., foreseer, Mayor, proclaim May 1st, 2018 as Hutchinson Random Acts of Kindness Day and encourage everyone to pay it forward. And under B, we have Resolution Number 14880, Resolution Accepting Cash Donations from Glencurth in the amount of $3,504 for a new bench at Veterans Memorial Field.
It's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by John, to accept. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Public comment, anybody in the audience want to address the council? Please come forward. Right, approval of minutes, we have workshop meeting of April 10th, 2018, and be regular meeting of April 10th, 2018.
I want to move to approve those. Second.
Motion by John, second by Steve, to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is consideration for approval of issuing parade permit for Memorial Day Parade, excuse me, on May 28th, 2018. B is consideration for approval of Resolution Number 14877. A Resolution Admending Resolution Number 14707 Establishing Income Guidelines and Assets Limitation for Senior Citizens, 65 years or older, disabled citizen, active duty military reserve or National Guard, deferred assessment and senior citizen, reduced refuge rate. C is consideration for approval of short-term gambling license, Shady Lane Sportsman Club on June 15th and 16th, 2018, at McLeod County Fairgrounds. D is consideration for approval of Purchase Order Number 19757, 2018, Street Repairs. E is consideration for approval of Purchase Order Number 19763, Wastewater Treatment Facility HVAC System Upgrade Boiler...
Boy, that's easy for me to say tonight.
Boiler replacement. F is consideration for approval of Resolution Number 14885, Resolution Alowing Historic Hutchinson to Apply for Grant to Repair Stained Glass Windows at the Historic Church on behalf of the City of Hutchinson. G is consideration for approval of Resolution Number 14881, Resolution Adopting Finding of Facts and Reason for Approval of a Conditional Use Permit for Electronic Recycling Facility and Storage Facility Located at 540 Third Avenue Northwest, Jeffrey Krueger applicant with favorable planning commission recommendations. H is consideration for approval of Resolution Number 14882, Resolution Adopting Finding of Facts and Reason for Approval of Conditional Use Permit to amend the planning development district to reduce minimum front yard setback from 25 to 20 feet on lots, 11 lots, and reduce the interior lot line to zero on 12 lots. Also, a variance of easements along four lot lines to allow for twin homes, Gus Riddell, applicant with favorable planning commission recommendation. I is consideration for approval of items for the 2018 Street Seal Coat Project, letting number six, project number 18-6. Under there, we have two resolutions. First one is 147, I'm sorry, 14878, Resolution Ordering Preparation of Report on Improvements, and Resolution Number 184879, Resolution Receiving Reports and Calling Hearings on Improvements. J is consideration for approval of Items for Trail and Parking Improvement, Project Leading Number 10, project number 18-10. And under there, we have two resolutions. First one is Resolution 14883, Resolution Ordering Preparation of Report on Improvements, and Resolution Number 14884, Resolution Receiving Reports and Calling Hearings on Improvements. And K is Claims Appropriation and Contract Payments.
Oh, my gosh.
You made it.
Yeah.
Anything, anybody want to pull off?
Mayor and council item G needs to be pulled off. We've got some additions to the resolution.
Then I also ask for J, please.
J, all righty.
Make a motion to approve the balance?
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. G?
Yes.
Dan?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We wanted to clarify a little bit what was allowed and what wasn't allowed regarding the recycling conditional use permit. So, I added a few conditions. M, and noted mini storage is not permitted on the site. You'll note in your packet, one of the original ideas was to utilize some storage containers that could possibly be taken off-site and filled up and then brought back onsite and stored. The terminology we used was kind of mini storage for that. Second was, is storage containers are allowed for the purpose of recycling business, but are not allowed to be used to rent to the public for storage. So, you know, if they're utilizing these storage containers for the recycling business and they're screened properly, that's acceptable, but not for kind of rental. And then, we noted that a little further, storage containers for the recycling, I just I guess said that, they need to be fully screened. And then also, related to the fire safety piece, I added K. The facility will periodically be inspected by the fire department to ensure adequate safety per Minnesota Statute 299F .011. And that just notes that similar to other businesses in town, the fire department has a right to go in and inspect to make sure that there's not any hazards, if there was an emergency or fire there, that they know what they're getting into, basically.
I appreciate the additions because, you know, it was a little confusing because we talked about outdoor storage for the business, but then there's also the piece about outdoor storage for the, kind of the mini storage thing. So, this helps to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Just note, that's the revised one, correct?
Yeah. Do we have to stay with revisions then?
Well, I think, as long as we note that. Assuming that was the motion by Chad and seconded by Mary.
Okay. All right, thanks. Steve?
Um, I, J, I guess we've got two projects there. One is by Elks Park, right, the trail and parking. And then the other one is a newer project being looked at, which is extending the trail from the Fifth Avenue Bridge over to Ranch Avenue. And I guess I just question that one, just now, you know, since we don't know for sure, you know, that Dakota's probably going to be a few years off because it'll probably require several grants in that process, so.
Yeah, I think it's...
Better funds, better use for those funds now.
We discussed this at Research Allocation Committee a bit, at the most recent meeting, but there's twofold, I guess, that spur, that extension that that trail would serve, both ultimately the connection to the Dakota Corridor, but we're also talking to the Charter School about providing a connection to the sidewalk facility along the south side of Fifth Avenue. So, that's really why we're bringing it forward at this point in time, is to get it under the bridge and then come up the slope to tie in. And I think what we'd bring up the slope is actually a sidewalk facility up the slope, not a trail facility, to make that connection to the sidewalk. And then we're left with, well, could we dead-end that trail at that point? Or do we just extend it all the way up to the ranch street, basically, around the pond? And I don't think, you know, to really dead-end it into the grass, I don't know if that'd be the right approach, but I guess I would encourage council maybe just to move forward with the hearing at this point, which is what we're requesting tonight. And I didn't bring drawings with me because, obviously, you know, the intent here is simply to order the hearing and present the project to council on the 22nd. And I think we can have more detailed conversations with respect to the scope and the need and the request we're hearing from the Charter School. And the funding, obviously, like you mentioned, Steve, yeah, that's a big piece of it, I realize that. But I think we're kind of back to, well, what we might be arriving at is whether we're going to bring this forward and really address, I guess, what we're hearing from the Charter School there.
I kind of agree with Steve. I think that I could see, you know, going underneath the bridge and coming back up to Fifth Avenue for, you know, for bike traffic.
For the wa, the kids crossing Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, instead of walking, you know, crossing Fifth Avenue, they could go underneath. But, I mean, to extend it from there out to Ranch, I don't think there's a need for that right now either.
What's the distance there from there to Ranch? What are we talking?
About 400 feet, yeah. So, I think, I just encourage you, we'll bring it forward on, order the hearing, we'll bring it forward on the 22nd, we'll have drawings. You know, we're not going to be finalizing plans or anything of that nature, we're the next month here. We have plenty of other things on our plate at this point in time. I just wanted, you know, respecting what we're hearing from the Elks group and, you know, them wanting to make their playground improvements, and we've, you know, wanted to bring these two projects together because they're right, both around $100,000, and it's, you know, we're going to have to public bid either one or both of them together. So, I think we'll just explain the scope of the project, and on the 22nd, we can make some decisions what exactly we'll be moving forward on.
Since we put, I don't know what the, right, the hawk lights on School Road, the flashers?
Yep.
Could you bring the pricing of if we wanted to add those, is kind of an alternative?
Yeah, we're just, yeah, I can bring up, we do have a recent quote on those because we are working with the school district doing a replacement over on Second Avenue to where the old in-ground system was. So, we're looking at trying to accomplish that this summer. So, we do have some recent numbers for that type of system.
I usually don't see people driving on Fifth Avenue faster than 40 miles an hour.
You don't, huh?
I mean, they're always right behind me when I'm going up the hill, so.
You're going 40?
No, I'm going 30.
You need one of those speed limits.
People move, and I had noticed the police officers in the parking lot of the Charter School quite often.
Well, now, you know, that's actually the elementary part of it now, up there now, so, which alleviates a lot of parking headaches.
Yeah, I'm very happy that there's not cars parked on the street there anymore.
Yeah, that's, that's nice, so.
Nothing else? Kent, if we decide to go forward, could we make this as that project like an alternative bid, possibly, just to get an idea what it might, cut it off with the sidewalk or extend the whole deal, or, you know?
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
And I will know that it was discussed briefly at Resource about kind of a cost of opportunity, and I think that was some of the same thoughts, too, was at least have it as an option to, and not necessarily, but something at least to be looking at at that time, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by John, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We do not have a public hearing. No unfinished business, new business, acceptance of Twins Community Grant Fund.
Mayor and council, I know, Bethel was hoping to be here, but had something come up that had pulled him away, and so I'll do my best to try and explain it. Staff didn't go out and pursue a potential grant. You may recall, last fall, we discussed some improvements that we were going to be doing, mainly to Northwoods Park as a, in association with a ponding project over at Lenden Park. And then the effort, obviously, to look for some additional funds to help make that. Staff did apply for a grant with the, with the Twins Community Foundation. We did receive a notice of an award. A part of receiving that is obviously a formal acceptance by the city and including your packet as a grant agreement. And it does, there is, there's, I think, five bullet points that are noted within that agreement that we were basically, we're agreeing to if we do accept the grant. And so, staff has reviewed it and would, I guess, recommend acceptance of it from the city council. I would say the requirements of the city are quite minor for what they're looking to give to us. It's to recognize them, so this is almost even step one of doing that, but then have more formal signage out there.
So, is this what we asked for? Is that kind of a limit, you know, on the grant requests?
I think 10,000 is a limit, and I apologize, I didn't ask that, so.
Just curious, because I know the project itself is...
I'm sure that they just, that's kind of a deal they throw out there, don't you think? That, you know, give each community 10 grand or something?
Yeah, and I think they've got, and there's, I think there's a couple of different funding options, and I apologize, I didn't ask that question, so.
Well, and even what they're asking us to agree to is pretty simple and straightforward.
That's what we'd want to do, anyway.
Yeah.
Right. So, if you're looking, are you looking for approval of that?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the Twins Community Grant.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Steve, to accept. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Ordinance Number 18-786, an ordinance suspending enforcement of Hutchinson City Ordinance 92.018 and 112056 pertaining to hours of use of sound application equipment and consumption of alcohol beverages in city parks. We have first reading, second, set second reading and adoption for May 8th, 2018.
Yep. Mayor and council, we've got a request for a private party down at the stage down at Sonic West Park. It's, you know, the application or the request, about 30 to 40 individuals, they'd be bringing their own liquor there, they would not be open to the public. Basically, our current ordinance only allows use of the park and noise of the park to be up to 10 o'clock. And so, that's the biggest, I guess, basis behind their request in front of you tonight.
And it only allows alcohol consumption, alcohol consumption until 9:00, I believe?
I'm sure you recall, is it 10:00? So, be both the noise and the alcohol consumption till 11:00?
I think it's great that the stage is starting to get more requests to be used, you know, with the wedding we had, you know, and now this, but, you know. I guess when I see this one compared to the wedding, though, the wedding seemed to really be making an effort to control a little bit who attends, especially the alcohol piece of it, and this one doesn't really at all. So, then I thought about, you know, River Song, they do that, County Fair, they have troll people and restricted to different areas. And we do that at the event center, too, right? If there's alcohol being sold, you know, as part of a wedding reception, I think there has to be police officers, so, you know. I think just leaving it wide open, I think music, for one, is going to draw some more people, and then you have alcohol, too, that might, I don't know, I want to approve this, and I don't know if this is the, since we don't have anything in policy right now that we...
Because I will note, if it was 7 to 10, they wouldn't even have to be here in front of us talking about it. And so, I mean, but I think Steve does raise a good point, you know, one of the questions that I was going to ask, depending on how we act on this tonight, was this is now the, I think, the third request?
Are we setting a precedence?
Well, no, I'm just thinking, third request for our noise ordinance regarding the stage, you know, is that something we need to think about for that park? Just moving forward in the future. But then, as Steve noted, too, right now, our ordinance allows for the consumption of alcohol within our city parks up until 10:00. And, so.
I think, yeah, I think there should be looked at, because like Steve said, I think we're going to get more and more requests, and that's what we want.
Right.
You know, but we still, we still need some guidelines, I would say.
Well, and I think, you know, the 11 o'clock thing is, that's a good time, you know? I wouldn't want one, someone to think they can push it till midnight or 1:00 or whatever.
You know, I'm looking at this just like a variance. I mean, you know, if you continue to have variance requests and if you continue to grant variances, then you need to change your ordinance.
Right.
So, basically, what you're doing here is granting a variance. And if it proves to be a problem, then you quit granting the variances. If it's not a problem, then you change the ordinance. Yeah, I think that addresses the noise thing, what, this is the, and to Steve's point, I think, which I think is a valid point, but this is the problem we have right now, somebody can have a private party down there all the way up until 10:00.
Sure.
And, you know, we've had some requests, mainly because they've been extending the hours into their credit, they've come forward with, here, this is our security plan to ensure that, yes, we're having and providing alcohol, and this is what we're going to do to ensure that it doesn't go outside of our local group, even though I would say they technically didn't have to do that, although as a part, the request to extend those timelines, I think that was valid. And I don't completely recall the last request, but I think there might have been some conversation about that being open to the public to come in. Listen, do you recall with the wedding? I think it was invited... Maybe that was a different one that was.
Invitation only, I thought, we were going to have bands.
Yeah, we were going to have bands.
Yeah.
Wristbands, I think.
But I think maybe, yeah, I think there's two things. One is maybe the policy for the stage rental, there's music and alcohol or whatever, and like John mentioned, if there's an extension of hours and something to be looked at with that, but...
And I think some, especially when you start looking at, and it might be great with all of our facilities, and so I'd have to double check on, is if you're going to be renting and providing alcohol, maybe one of the simple requirements is a security plan to ensure that it's, that they provide that with us, to ensure that's not...
We also have to consider that the campground is down there, you know, and whoever's camping those adjacent spots is not going to be excited about people drinking at 11.
Rocking out at...
Rocking at 11. Well, because the tent sites are to the east.
They're even closer.
So, if you had families down there camping, that's going to be a disaster for them, so something to think about.
It's something we should be discussing, setting some regulations.
It's early, and May 18th, so.
Right.
Because this is different than like River Song, where River Song is renting all the sites, and everybody camping there is probably going... and everybody camping there is probably going, or going to River Song, you know? So they're expecting it to be a party. Whereas if my family, I guess, rented a camping site and everybody's rocking out till eleven, it wouldn't be very exciting for me, but.
So, in this case, we got the requests before us.
Right.
Yeah.
And it is early, there's not, I don't think anybody's gonna be camping in May, unless the weather gets really nice.
I, I would disagree.
Well, and, and I think our-
Doesn't the campground open May first?
Campground opens May first, and so.
I would bet that'll be pretty full.
Oh.
Especially after the winter we had, people are waiting to get out, so.
If it's dry.
Yeah.
You know, and we don't know.
That's only a weekend before Memorial Day, where Memorial Day's always a big-
Memorial week, you know, that can be busy.
But it can be pretty nice that weekend, eighteen, so.
I, we could, you know, maybe approve this one, but have staff look, look into maybe having some more guidelines for, for future requests.
I guess, I mean, that's kind of my feeling is, you know, I would, I, I'd make a motion to approve this. And if it appears to be problematic, if people let her camp or complain, then we really know that we, uh, have to review the policy or we, you know, like, just my point about variances on buildings and anything like that. So I would make it a motion to approve it.
I'll second that. Motion by John, second by myself to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty, um, surplus equipment and donation to nonprofit policy.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I did hand out, um, a revised policy on your, on your desk tonight. You know, we, staff worked on this, and we actually tried to kind of kill two birds with one stone on this. We've, back in, um, two thousand and sixteen, state legislature did approve a policy where we can donate surplus equipment to nonprofits. And I think we've had this conversation in the past, that, you know, we get requests sometime from nonprofits for certain equipment from the city. And previously to two thousand and sixteen, we legally could not donate that. I know there was an article that came out, and, so that was one aspect of the policy. The second aspect is that we've received throughout the years what they call as dealer loaders. This is more specific to the liquor store. But we've also had vendors, I would say, and probably other aspects of the city that have donated or given us, um, if you wanna call them prizes or equipment or more or less gifts in some cases. When it comes to the liquor store, like they said, they're called dealer loaders. And you may recall last year, when we were looking at some of the conflict of interest, um, and I sent a memo to staff, and I know there was a, an article in the, the paper about, um, donations at the liquor store and how they come to a close. And part of that was because we simply didn't have any policies in place that allowed us to, first off, take some of this equipment, and then secondly, to, to give it out. And so with some of the statutes that have changed at the state, and with really reviewing this from a, from a legal standpoint, talking with the League of Minnesota Cities, we put together a policy that we believe allows us to get, that gives us at least a little bit of flexibility to get rid of our surplus equipment, and to also deal with donations that we may have from vendors and our dealer loaders that we would get at the, the liquor store. And for the most part, when it comes to the donation side of things, the council just, first off, would have to accept that, so. And then if we decide that we would, we want to get rid of it, um, we could do that. So that's the biggest thing when it comes to the dealer loaders and the donations, so.
Yeah, when I was reading through this one, I was reflecting on, you know, the Habitat for Humanity Hammer Nails Dinner. And I'm, there was a, I, I'm not sure if it was a donation from Parks and Recs. It was one of the auction items, the passes to the pool. And I was trying to figure out how that fit into this. Was that a donation by the city to the nonprofit, or?
It was actually probably something we shouldn't have done, in all honesty.
Yeah, that, that, so, so, yeah, that's, those are some of the things that-
Even though it is my favorite charity, but.
Yeah, you know, and that's the, some of it, I, I would say, out of the goodness of our hearts, but really, when it comes down to, we have to look at, it's more or less taxpayer money than products. And so that's where some of this clears up. It doesn't necessarily address that, and quite frankly, I don't, and we've had these conversations with staff, I don't think that's an allowable practice from the city. But there are certain things that we are given that we could, and turn around, get back out. And that's what the liquor store had been doing, prior to really any policies of which we had, you know, said stop. And that, and I would say some of that you get into, that's the downside or the conflicts of when, you know, we've got a, a government liquor store who's competing with the private sector, and the private sector can do those type of things. And so it's just clarifying, you know, where we can fall into place in regards to, to doing that. And so this, this policy gives us some leeway. It's still, you know, I want to make sure the public realizes, it still doesn't give us contraband when it comes to donations. Um, because for the most part, we really can't. But like I said, if there's some surplus equipment, or some vendor gifts that we get, that we do have an option now to, to accept that and/or to get rid of that.
And John K. Loftall, five oh one three C, can't accept surplus property from the city of Hutchinson?
Correct, as an elected official, so.
Or a city employee?
Or as a city employee, yeah. That's some of the language that was, you know, when, it, the, the policy was based off of surplus equipment, and we tried to interject some of the dealer loaders and donations, and I think we missed the ball a little bit. And so we included some additions to that here at the last minute, so.
One thing I thought was odd, and I know this comes right from state statute language, is the definition of surplus equipment, where it says, "Equipment used by the city's Public Works Department" and cellular phones and emergency medical and firefighting equipment that is no longer needed. What about, we got a lot of, so that means park equipment?
Park equipment, correct, or even if we had office supplies, yeah, that's, I don't know. It was the lobbying effort of the state, or, that's kind of one of those weird laws where certain aspects of the city can donate it, but not other aspects of it. And that's what I mean when, you know, if somebody from the public hears this and goes, "Oh, now the city can donate." Well, not necessarily, so.
I think it was surplus tickets to the, uh, swimming pool, that's what was donated.
From last year?
Yeah. Not to get that out of the city in trouble, but, yeah. I thought you were going down the route of surplus Vikings tickets from a couple of years ago, but, uh, that, uh, state was running issues from, so. But, so I think we, you know, made some updates to it that I think are good and kind of has a broader impact on what we're looking for, and so. There's not any additional questions we would ask the council to consider adopting this.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. City Financial Management.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we talked about this, uh, back at the end of March. We gave you a, a rough draft of, of, really what we're trying to do is present, is get all of our financial documents and policies into one document, quite frankly. We'd had a couple of policies that were kind of spread out throughout the whole organization in different areas. And quite frankly, we had a lot of policies that simply didn't exist. And so what we tried to do was put something into place that's not only a benefit to the finance department and staff that have to work within it, but also the city council. Gives you guys a, a better idea and understanding of, of, you know, how we go about, um, establishing the policies, and quite frankly, how we handle our, our finances here at the city. And I would say it's a great resource for the public, too, if they have any, any questions. And so we did receive some questions and comments that, uh, you know, we attempted to address. And it came out late today, so I'm not sure what the, the feelings or the desires of the council, if it's something you wanted to look at, you know, we're not necessarily in a hurry for it, so if you would want to, to table it, uh, that is fine. Otherwise, one of the things that we did note is that our plan is to, is that this will be presented to the council for review on an annual basis. So it'll probably become part of our, our normal May meeting when we get together, and just something that you guys will keep an eye on. We have included, I know, some, some graphs at the back end that deal with the financial, or with the debt service levy part. And, um, there's a form or something else that was included. So we've made some, some minor tweaks, tweaks and some updates. So I'm not sure what the desire of council is at this, at this time.
Well, I tried to get through the whole thing between four o'clock and, for the, the second time. And I got through most of it. I, you know, I'd kind of liked to table it. I just, you know, just, we had the list from Steve, um, and on the conflict of interest thing, I'm wondering, you know, should the council be signing a conflict of interest form every year? I know, I just went through steps out of the Cloud County Historical Society, and that's one of our deficiencies, that all of board members out there should sign a conflict of interest.
You know, Andy and I talked about, I think the state, it was the state statute or the state auditor says that it's your responsibility to disclose it.
But not to sign-
Not necessarily to assign something. That doesn't mean that as a council, you can consider that as a, an option or a policy.
I'd also prefer to table it.
Well, yeah, I, um, I mean-
It's a big document, and there's a lot of information, so.
It's, well, it's big, and then, you know, and then Steve raised a lot of questions, and I was trying to correlate it, this to this, and to your, your responses to the questions, and.
And some of it's been, obviously-
But, you know, that's good, good training, so. Little bit off topic, but one of the things you talked about in here was, like, if it was a bad investment, or you saw the market dropping, that you can take the money out of that and transfer it somewhere, somewhere else. And that's kind of at your discretion or at Andy's discretion. And I, just in reflecting on, you know, back, we had the list of the bonds that we could possibly pay off, that we were paying higher interest on. And should we be using hospital money to get rid of that debt right now? I mean, just to save a little bit of money? I know it's really not on topic here, but I just wondered if that made sense.
Which debt, any of the debt at all?
Well, there, there were only a few that we could pay off. There were some that-
The PFA loans, we can't pay off.
Yeah.
But the GO bonds, we can, I believe, in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, in that timeframe. You know, the hospital money was really a prepayment of general fund dollars.
Yeah.
The debt is in the water and sewer funds, so to, to apply those, which you certainly can, would be, in essence, taking future general fund or facility capital improvement-type dollars and allocating it to the sewer and water funds.
But I just looked at, as a whole, we're getting one point six percent interest on the money that's invested right now, and some of these GO bonds are probably at, what, six percent?
Well, no, we're not that high.
We're not that high, or?
No. You know, we can certainly invest in other vehicles as well with the hospital money. I'm just keeping it liquid at the moment.
Right.
Just till we decide what we want to do, um.
You know, Andy, maybe just share a little bit, you know, 'cause, on how we go about with our investments, because we are somewhat limited as a municipality in what we can really invest in.
We're very limited, and right now, uh, we have certificates of deposit, which are safe. They're FDIC insured. We're limited to, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand invested with any one bank. So we have to spread it across several banks, which is a challenge. We are invested, I believe, about five million dollars in municipal bonds, so similar to how we bond every year. We're actually investing in someone else's improvements or, uh, debt issuances. And then we also invest in federal agencies such as Freddie Mae, or Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae, um, mortgages and whatnot. So all of our investments are very safe. They're all, at least, I believe, double A rated. And, uh, the odds of us having to get out of one of these investments is very low. So we hold them to maturity, and, uh, I don't anticipate we'd ever have to sell one short, as our policy states. But, uh, the policy language mirrors the state statute language or the state's language, so. It's in there because it's in the state's, in the state's language, but I don't anticipate selling investments early.
But just to clarify or reiterate that, because I know there were comments, like, with that money, that, oh, we could invest it in mutual funds or whatever, and we're not allowed to do that by state statute.
No, exactly. We're limited, uh, you, and it's rightly so. We want to protect our principal. We don't want to get in some issues like, I, I believe, the fire relief saw a while back, where they were losing principal in some, um, riskier investments. We're, we're limited to investments where, uh, you're preserving your principal. Unfortunately, we don't see the returns that some, uh, you might see in the private sector. But if we're now earning one to one and a half percent, one point six percent on a money market, that's a big improvement over just the last year, so.
You know, the way I look at it is that we're really, we are really, you guys are the stakeholders of the public's money. And so state has set up laws to basically protect that to the mo, to the highest level. That's why we can't invest in things like mutual funds and stocks and, you know, certain aspects of it, so.
Yeah, my thought was just, is there a possibility of paying off these? If it were, if you were paying one more percent on a half a million bucks or something like that, can you pay that off? And instead of us, I think, our, our number was, we were making eighty-nine thousand bucks a year theoretically off this money?
If it just sits in the money market, right?
Yeah.
But then that'll compound as it earns. You'll earn interest on, uh, the interest earnings, it just keeps compounding. But, yeah, you can definitely always look at refinancing your debt. That's something we look at every year, and Ailers actually helps us with that. It's just, what's the appropriate funds to pay off that debt?
You know, and I, and I, I think this is a good discussion, so obviously it's probably needed for more in depth, but, you know, one of the comments is about, we're getting rid of the sales tax. Well, we've got twenty-six million dollars, I think, still left in water, wastewater debt, so. Six million doesn't, really, you know, which, but plays back in your question of, you know, paying some of that down. I think we can do that, and still-
Email your senators and representatives about the funding, the one that we just got today from Coalition of Greater Minnesota, since people saw that, to get them to fully fund, you know, those issues.
Alrighty, so you want to table this for now?
I just, for, yeah, before we do that, since I can say something before, uh, the one thing I'd suggest or maybe looking at is the general fund balance piece. Now, I can't find it.
Uh, page seventeen, fund balance, should we add? Yeah, it's on page fifteen.
Page sixteen, sixteen. Government funds, general fund, it talks about our policy right now is we want to keep it above forty percent, which is what the auditor talks about. And then it goes forty to fifty percent. Yes, and then over fifty percent should be reviewed by the council, determine if excess could, should be transferred to some other funds, or, um, I guess, my feeling that noted it, and my question is, maybe that should be forty to sixty percent. And then anything over sixty percent would be available to consider changing. But knowing that anything over forty to sixty, we could still transfer that out, um, kind of like what we did with the pool, right?
You know, Andy, I talked about that today. You guys could very well do that, if that's what you want. You know, we're not sure we'll see sixty percent fund balance again. And I suppose there's some conversations that need to take place on the, the pool money, and so that's a, that's a possi, not the pool money, but the hospital money, and so that, I guess that is a possibility, but. I mean, because right now, we have it set up, really, it's up, except there's nothing in here that's automatic. It just says you guys are gonna look at it once over fifty. If you want to move it to sixty, that's fine. It gives staff direction to realize that we're really not gonna be, bring anything to you guys for a recommendation until it gets to that level, but.
Yeah, and the recommendation from the state was forty to six, or forty to fifty percent fund balance.
Recommendation from the state is anything over thirty-five percent.
Yeah, okay.
The forty is what we've, is what the, a council at one time or another with the city established, the forty percent. the 40%.
I know the city of Wyoming had 100% fund balance. And so they actually lowered their levy last year, which I'm not sure, well, yeah, I don't know if that's long-term, you know, maybe keep it flat, but.
Well, and that's, you know, and that's part of the, you know, because what we had before was simply a policy stated that state recommends you have anything, you have your fund balance anywhere between 35 and 50%. Our policy said 40. We never said anything, okay, what happens when it gets to 50 or 60? And that's where we put the one clause in there, you know, excess of 50 will be reviewed by the council to determine, okay, do you want to just leave that? Or do we want to, you know, transfer that? So that, it is really a policy discussion. So if there's an, if there's a desire to change any of that percentage, you know, staff's, our one recommendation is the 40%, I would say, right, Andy? I mean, I think that's our biggest, that's our biggest concern from a financial healthy standpoint, you know?
To stay at least that number, yeah.
Maybe we could compromise and go 55. Anyway, that's something for next week.
And we're not going to get into this discussion on Thursday at all. No, because we're just going to be.
No, and I'd say, I guess that's another question. Do you want to have a workshop on just the details of this? You know, outside of.
Yeah, Steve's gone through it pretty thoroughly.
I mean, really outside, I mean, I will say, there's not, what, this is one big policy, but really stuff that would probably take some in-depth discussion would be something like this. I don't know if there's a whole lot of, there's maybe a couple other items that I think a workshop might be a waste of time, but it's always out there for, so. But yeah, take, you know, obviously we made some last minute changes, there's some other comments that were provided. So if you're not comfortable, I guess my recommendation is to be to table it too, or if I make it the next meeting or whatever.
Well, could we just have like a half hour workshop?
John?
Steve? I mean, I mean, this is a pretty important document that, you know.
Could you dedicate a half hour just to talk about that? Probably enough time, I think.
Sure.
And I can look at it. Plus then, you know, get to go through this again and hit the high points again.
Well, you got, you got your highlighter, so.
Well, I, well, I got Matt's highlighted, and then I, then I was highlighting the points that Steve highlighted.
The only issue would be before our next council meeting, we couldn't do it. We've got, there's management training for a respectful workplace. Although we do have a budget workshop meeting on, we haven't set it yet, but it's our anticipation to have our, our budget kickoff meeting workshop for our second meeting in May, which is, you know, May.
22nd?
May 22nd. So we can incorporate that into, into that discussion and just, you know, so if you wanted to table it to, to May 22nd for action.
That's okay time-wise, right?
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, we don't have any of these policies in place right now. So this is all new for the most part. So it's not like we're dramatically changing the way we're doing business. It's, we're just stating it for, for guidance and future leaders, so.
If it's only a half an hour, could we just do it within the bounds of the council meeting?
I mean, we could schedule for the next meeting. I guess if you feel like you're still not, you're stuck at something, you could table it again.
Look through what, you know, questions and what Matt added.
Yeah.
And if you have other things, share them with Matt. And I guess the one, that was the one I thought of, additional one that, now, I noted in there too, but I knew there'd have to be some discussion on that one. So just wanted to float that out.
And if for some reason the council meeting on the 22nd is so loaded that.
Well, I would say table it to the, to May 8th, have another discussion if you feel like you're still not comfortable with where you're at. Table it again, so.
Make a motion to table it to May 8th.
Second vote.
Motion by Steve, second by John, to table it till May 8th. Any other discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Special assessment agreement between Minnesota State Colleges and universities in the city of Hutchinson, Century Avenue Southeast reconstruction. Kent.
Yes, thanks, Mayor and Council. What we have in front of you is a rather, pretty simple agreement between the city and Minskew Ridge Water College. The Ridge Water staff drafted this agreement. If you might, if you may remember from our Denver Avenue reconstruction project, and when that was built in '06, assessments were, were activated about 10 years thereafter. Then we had some discussions with the college, obviously, to, to resolve that assessment issue and ultimately arrived at their, their payment of those assessments associated with that improvement. One of the, one of the things we agreed on going forward was putting together agreements like this when assessments are administered against the college. So want to thank them. They, they did draft this agreement, you know, which they've, they've done this with other public agencies across the state. So they, they took something that they've utilized in the past, put it together. I made a few revisions, not too many. We did have one revision that we incorporated this evening, so there is a, a hard copy in front of you that simply clarifies section two, special assessment on the second page. There was a nuance there in the language. So basically, the, the same dollar amount, $64,311, the same amount for the assessment being administered is, is, does match what was in the original agreement that they prepared. So with that, I would recommend approving this. Just want to say the college has been a good, good partner as we've developed this project and looked at the phasing of the construction and arrived at the, the assessment amount, obviously. So thanks to, to them and the people involved on that end.
One question I had, Kent, was in the future, it says at least a year before, so is that too long or is there flexibility?
Yeah, I mean, I gave them a bit of a heads up, a year out on this. We didn't by any means have the assessment amount arrived at a year out, but I did start talking to their, their finance person a year or so out, so.
And that was, that was one of the stipulations I had put in when we agreed to the, the last assessment.
Yeah. I think it was mentioned in those meetings that this was coming up.
The term I remember was a global agreement.
Yeah. No, I guess. It is, it is too far out to have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, you know, we, from a, from a project delivery standpoint. But like I said, they were, they've been a great partner on this project and haven't.
I think the biggest thing with that one year is that at least, I think what they're looking for is just a heads up and finance that. So even if it's as simple as, hey, we think in here for now, we're going to be doing a assessment on Century Avenue, it helps them out, so.
Yeah, we should be done for a while. Michigan Street would be the potential next one, their property there on the corner, Second and Michigan. And that is just starting to show up on our CIP, our five-year CIP.
Well, it definitely gives them a heads up, like I said, to budget, you know, for it, and which they noted in the document, so. It's good. And a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Mary, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. We have minutes, reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have Public Arts Commission minutes from March 15, 2018. We have the Parks Recreation Community Education minutes from April 2, 2018. City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for March 2018. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from March 20, 2018. Planning Commission minutes from March 20, 2018. Jim, do you have anything for us tonight?
I'm terribly satisfied that.
Note that down. You're happy because you're getting a new boiler.
Three years of headaches on my behalf is going away hopefully.
Just a question on that, did you have to commission that? Do you have an independent, independent third party coming in and making sure it's installed properly? Do you know or not?
Um, no. Um, it's going to be professionally installed, obviously. So I have, and we're always, every year, we're inspected by the boiler, you know, licenses, all the Department of Labor.
Thanks, Jim. Andy, you have anything else for us?
Nope, nothing for tonight.
Kent.
Couple of things on the project front. Second Avenue, you might have noticed there's some pipe laying on the ground. We did get it moved off the trail, so thanks for the heads up on that, unfortunately.
They're trying to take a chat.
They are hopefully going to be fusing that pipe together the end of the week, this weekend, and then the, the boring contractor will come in early next week, it's sounding like, to do the actual boring work. And then the R and R, the local utility contractor, will then make the connections on both, both sides of the river shortly thereafter. So hopefully that's all going to start to take shape next week. River flows are up a bit, they are trending downward right now, so they, they seem to hit their, their peak about a day or so ago. So we'll keep an eye on that, but yeah, Second Avenue may be closed as early as potentially Saturday. We're trying to figure out if this fusing contractor would like to have the roadway closed or not. And, you know, we don't, we'd rather have them communicate to us that they, they would like to have the road closed and we're all on the same page and they're not monkeying around and creating an unsafe situation under traffic. So we always default to being conservative, I guess, with respect to closing roadways and protecting the public and the contractor.
So that would be relayed on Facebook as well?
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we have our, our emergency services list and, and press list, but yeah, so I'll try and do that, you know? We depend on the contractor, nothing, but they have very fluid, dynamic schedules and these people diffuse the pipe are coming from California, apparently. So I'm sure they're doing other things along their way, so yeah, might be, might be a short notice situation. But at least we, we try to inform our emergency services providers and the likes. Century Avenue has turned into a bit of a moving target, I guess, schedule-wise. We're still waiting on our federal aid plan approval. And what we're hearing now is there seems to be a little bit of a backup due to some staffing limitations down at the MinDOT central office. So not much we can do. We have a million reasons why to wait, so, you know, that's the amount of the federal funding. So we are examining the schedule as every week ticks by here, but the identified May 14th start date won't be happening. And we've communicated that to the college and the, the hospital and clinic. And now we're, we're in a holding pattern, and I'm hoping to receive notice by the end of the week and we can get things moving along from an advertisement timeframe and ultimately the assessment, ordering the assessment hearing and council meeting. With that noted, there may be a need for a special council meeting out last week of May. We have a fifth Tuesday. If things were to play out and we get notice and hit our advertisement dates, we could conceivably be awarding that last week of May. So, or at least ordering, excuse me, ordering the assessment hearing, potentially that last week of May. I'll work with Matt as this develops, but just wanted to let the council know. And yeah, like I said, we're, we're shooting for June 11th now, if everything plays out in the near future. Other than that, I did send out some information on Highway 15 passing lanes study. Very pleased with where that arrived at, unless council would like. I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, but worthwhile effort. Like what was noted in there, the, the segment between Hutchinson and Dassel was the third rated segment. And, you know, that wasn't necessarily due to the traffic currents, but it was more from a regional need basis. So we were, we were happy that was arrived at, I guess selfishly from, from Hutchinson's standpoint. So now it's really looking forward and working with, with MinDOT staff. Unfortunately, Highway 15 isn't designated in a regional corridor. It's not an IRC, which is basically the system of roadways that connects all the communities, 10,000 population or more, to a four lane highway. I, our IRC is Highway 22 to Glencoe to 212, and ultimately to the interstate system, 494. That was arrived at many, many years ago now at this point.
Be nice if 212 was four lanes.
Yeah. So yeah, actually, the four, the connection to the four lane does not occur until, well, until you get to the new 212 corridor, I guess, in, in Chaska. But anyways, and then ultimately that goes to 494. But we are going to be just working with, with MinDOT and trying to figure out what funding opportunities might be available. This project isn't going to happen, you know, next year or even five years. It's probably more of a, you know, a 10-year development as these, as these pop up. That being said, the, the segment between.
Kimball and 94.
Well, no, nope, to the south. There's a segment that's programmed for an overlay in 2021, I believe. I think it's the, the Dassel to.
Kingston.
Kingston portion, yes, I believe. So there, there, MinDOT's communicated that they're going to look at this study as they develop that project. So that's, I guess, a little bit of good news on that front.
And with that, though, obviously they added passing lanes to Highway 7 years ago, so.
I raised that question, how that was arrived at and funded and, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Didn't get much of an answer. So yes, you're right. These things can be incorporated through a development of a, basically an overlay project. And that's what we're stressing is this segment on 15 has already been identified for 2021 now. How can that conceivably be incorporated into that project without relying on, I guess, grant dollars or other dollars outside of their trunk highway dollars? Because these improvements meet the merits of utilizing trunk highway dollars. You know, it's just whether they see the need or not from a MinDOT district standpoint or prior.
Have a study like that.
Yeah, exactly. Now it's, it's in writing and, and we're going to continue to, to look, and we've been talking about this for quite a while, forming a more regional transportation coalition. You might be aware of this or not, but the Maker County engineer retired a few months ago and the successor was just, I guess, identified. So, and he's taken the job and he's actually the assistant here at McLeod County, Philip Schmoltz. So that's a good thing. Bill's a, a great guy and we look forward to working with him on a potential, I guess, transportation coalition in the future. That's it.
Thanks, Kent. Steve, let's start with you tonight. First, I just wanted to pass on my thanks to staff, Public Works, Kent, with the snow removal, obviously, last weekend, and it was a big job.
Parks also, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, well.
The whole group.
Yeah, right. I was going to say that.
Yeah, they, obviously, on the trail front, there was a significant effort in the school properties that they, yeah.
Yeah, so, thanks.
No problem.
But then even now, I, you know, see the street sweepers out now and so the alleys are being worked on, so people are really jumping on it, trying to.
We're doing a little bit of patching still, so yeah, there's plenty going on right now. Obviously.
Finally hit 60, we're itching to get out. Yeah.
Yeah, spring's happening like a, like a switch here, obviously.
But then the other thing was, you know, we've talked about affordable housing and maybe having a group look at that, and the needs for that, and how something might be able to be done possibly, but there's a lot of focus also on the need for more daycare options. I know I've talked to some people at work, and Chad, you can attest to that.
It's an absolute nightmare to find a daycare.
And there's, there's three bills at the legislature, and, um, of a help with that, and one is through the, uh, going to the bonding. That seems to be the, the one that's gotten the farthest so far, and, and that one would be five million dollars of bonding and five million dollars, general fund dollars, for grants to local governments and nonprofits to cover up to fifty percent of cost to build and upgrade or expand, you know, facilities, so, um, might be nice to put in a plug for that, as well as, is that something that we should look at as well? You think of workforce development, and that's a key part of that as well.
Couple of things first regarding the workforce or the affordable housing. I know the HRA is in the middle of doing a survey, and so they're, and that's going to be the precipitous to a meeting with us, so they're looking at that.
Does survey help with?
Survey to the businesses to gauge their, to gauge their housing needs for their workforce, and so.
As, yeah, so.
And, and, and to developers, too. So I, so I don't, there was a little bit of feedback that I, and I'm not sure if that's public, public yet, but, um, what developers are saying, so.
Also, be beneficial as a place to start to maybe do a community survey for daycare.
Yeah, you know, I, I will say, and I, and I'm not sure what you guys hear, I, I don't, I don't get any calls on that in our office. I'll really admit, and it's not appropriate for this setting, but I've got my own personal opinions on daycare, because some experiences, but, but no, I don't, I, I know there's an issue. I, I don't have a whole lot of feedback in Hutchinson, but it doesn't mean that there's, that there's not, so.
A lot of the issues like, because daycare's going to only have so many infants, and that's where you run into problems. Like, yeah, toddlers, it's not that big of a deal, but if each daycare can have one or two infants, it's tough to find a place to park a baby.
You park them?
Yeah.
But, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is having a joint meeting with the EDA and the HRA and the city council, and that might be a good positive to really find out, and get some of that feedback, and that, and that, you're right, that might play then into a community survey of some additional needs, so.
I know some of the larger companies, you know, in the metro area are actually having, having daycare right at their facilities for their workers.
Well, I think we talked about this last summer a little bit, too. I think I, I'd gone down to a league workshop down in St. James or something, and they had, they had, or they had a woman who did daycare from St. James, and the city manager from Benson was there. Benson had put some city funds into daycare, but to Chad's point about the infants was the, the kids that they make money off were getting drawn into that program and really hurting the daycare people. And then the, and then it was the educational component, I think we talked about, where it costs the daycare providers two thousand bucks to train up a person, and so then they get trained up at the expense of the daycare, and then they end up going to the school system or something like that. But it's complicated, and I think that's.
And I know the league has done, league and the coalition have done a lot of work in, in trying to address some of it, so.
Yeah, so. That's it. Chad?
I don't have anything additional.
Mary, welcome back.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for passing the, that agreement that we could have a fair. I wasn't here, but thank you from all the calls I got. It certainly was the public who was speaking.
Well, I think the Nosteral Association accepted the challenge.
Right.
So that's the important thing.
It's a good thing.
That's our oversight on.
Now that spring has finally arrived, I think everybody needs to have a heads-up, because there's motorcycles out there, there's kids on bikes, there's kids walking, running, darting out, and we just need to be more alert, you know? I mean, you're not used to that, you know, winter keeps more people in, now they're all out, so heads up to everybody. Look before you take off at that stop sign, or.
Well, Mary, I'll say it out loud for you. Eyes on the road, not on your phone.
Yeah, right.
With the bicyclists, we already got those quick guides. Matt made up some mailing labels to stick on there for City of Hutchinson, just so that people know where they came from, but we'll be getting those out to the schools shortly.
That's it?
Thanks, Mary. John?
Um, rode my bike on Sunday from Hutchinson to a couple of miles east of Major Avenue. Only had to get off the bike about eight times to walk through the snow. I'm pretty sure it's gone now, so get out and ride on the trail. I need to ride into Minneapolis on the fourth of May and back on the fifth of May, so I better get riding.
I, I have one more question.
Yeah.
And maybe Kent can ask, because John's not here, but the big snow pile that's over there by the park, are we just going to wait for it to melt?
Don't wait for it to melt at this point, yeah. We had to do some stockpiling in some, I guess, abnormal locations due to the, the Arroy site down south on Adams and the Bass Pond locations being too soft, so we had stockpiled in that area. We stockpiled a bit by the depot over here, there's some others scattered here and there in some of the parking lots.
Mary, you can take it home with you if that's.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 I still have some in my yard.
Build a, build a snow fort, dig a tunnel.
As kids, we did that.
And then throw snowballs at the cars.
Thanks, Kent.
Don, anything else?
That's, that was just mine.
All right. Matt?
Just a quick reminder that we got the conclusion of our strategic planning session this Thursday at two-thirty. It's going to be at the, the Fire Hall. And a early bird registration for the League's annual conference expires on April thirtieth, so if you're planning on going, I think it's June twentieth to the twenty-second in St. Cloud. I'm planning on going, I'm going to probably just drive back and forth. I should, I should say, I have to go to my schedule.
Can't ride back and forth, can we?
Well, that's, I, that's what I was thinking about. I was thinking about the bike ride up Spicer, New London, Wilmer, too.
So if you're interested, just let me know, and then, and I realize it's not that far off, but actually, a month, May twenty-second is when filing opens for council positions. And we did send out this week a notification on the workshop for those who are interested in running for office, and we've called, or I've called it, I should say, so you want to be a elected official. We got that out to the, the news media, and I actually got it on Facebook, and I, I can actually say I've already had one person sign up.
Okay.
Or it cut that confirmation today. So if you are interested in running for office, or if you just want to know more, we kind of go into, I go into details just about the day-to-day life of a council member. Just want to know more, feel free to, to sign up for that, and I'll even say, it's a three-hour event, and last time, we used all three hours.
That was a good event.
Um, and so, and if you don't have three hours, you know, if you want to just come and meet with me and ask questions, just, you know, get in touch with me, and I'll do that as well for anybody who may be.
And again, I wanted to say what date that is?
That's May tenth, and that's, we have it from five to eight here in the council chamber, so that's a Thursday, and so just over two weeks away, so that's it for me.
Thanks, Matt. I have an interest form here. We do have an opening on the Police Commission, and Kim Pearson has a application in to serve on that committee, so if no.
Actually, that was filled by Steve Sinsley.
I think there might be another one, too, though.
Joe Peel's going on, yeah. Dump the gun on that one, Steve. Yeah. Yeah, Joe, Joe Peel's is leaving, moving out of town, so Kim Pearson has a.
Can you tell us about that person?
She, she just wants to get involved in, she is an ambassador of Hutchinson, co-invest of Litchfield and Church Council and Church Finance Secretary. She works at Ameriprise Financial.
Do you know if she's met with Dan yet, maybe?
Yeah. So if there's no objections, we'll put her on the commission.
And tell her that she has to come to the, May, May tenth at five to eight P.M.
Besides that, everybody go out and enjoy the weather. German?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by John, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.